I would like to call this July 11th City of Stillwater Council Meeting to order. Bam.
Say.
Waiting to do that.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Kristy Looper here to lead us. Kristy Looper's daughter, Kalissa.
A pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kalissa, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're always so pleased to have relatives of our wonderful staff, city staff, and we're excited to have you here. I understand this is a big week for you.
Yeah.
Because you get to do the Pledge of Allegiance, right?
Yeah.
And why else is this a big week?
Because it's my birthday week.
That's right. And all smart people celebrate their birthday for an entire week, not just one day.
Yeah.
How old will you be on this birthday?
I'll be 11.
11. So are you in 6th grade, 5th grade?
I'll go into 5th.
5th grade. Where do you go to school?
Richmond Elementary.
Pretty okay school?
Yeah.
Good. What's your favorite subject?
Math.
Did you bring a lot of math books home for studying this summer?
No.
What is the most exciting thing you're going to do this summer?
Going on my cruise that we're going to.
Cruise?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. On Boomer Lake? Where are you going to go on your cruise?
The Caribbean cruise, Costa Rica, Cozumel, and I don't know the other one.
Well, that is going to be a little bit boring, so I would suggest taking some math books. Does anyone else have anything for Kalissa?
I just want to know, do you actually have a calendar that's counting down the days until school starts?
No.
Okay. I have something for you. This brings us to proclamations. And tonight, it's my pleasure. Let's see. Should I invite the proclamation people up? This is so long you could help me read it. Whereas, the Sister Cities Council of Stillwater, Oklahoma expresses support for Sister Cities International Day on July 15, 2016, and encourages our elected officials and citizens to celebrate the importance of community involvement in programs and exchanges that lead to a more peaceful and prosperous world. And whereas, in 2016, Sister Cities International is celebrating 60 years of global citizen and civic diplomatic action in support of a future where the world's cities, communities, and its citizens can come together in common ground to build bridges across nations, cities, and communities around the globe in order to create and sustain world peace. And whereas, Sister Cities International was founded as a presidential initiative by President Dwight David Eisenhower on September 11, 1956, at the White House Conference on Citizen Diplomacy to create more community-led global relationships so that people of different cultures could appreciate their differences and build partnerships that would lessen the balance of international conflicts. And whereas, since President Eisenhower, every sitting president has been the honorary chairman of Sister Cities International, an organization of over 570 member cities, counties, and states, with relationships that include over 2,300 communities in 150 countries spanning six continents. And whereas, countless city, county, and state governments and their leaders have been involved in global relationships due to Sister Cities International, and thousands of volunteers have hosted educational, economic, cultural, municipal, and humanitarian assistance exchange programs and events throughout the U.S. And whereas, Sister Cities International Day is an opportunity for Americans and the world to come together and show how powerful humanity can be when uniting to promote peace, progress, and prosperity for a better world. Now therefore, I, Pat Darlington, Vice Mayor of the City of Stillwater and the Stillwater City Council, do hereby recognize the lasting impact of Sister Cities International and support the designation of July 15, 2016, as Sister Cities International Day. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Stillwater to be affixed this 11th day of July 2016. Thank you. I would like to introduce you, representing the City of Stillwater, Sister Cities Council, correct? Correct. And if you would just say your name.
Neil Durham.
Neil Durham.
Judy Nelson.
Judy Nelson.
Bob Burke.
Bob Burke.
Larry Jones.
Larry Jones. I know all of these fine people. They have wonderful reputations in Stillwater, and they do so much, even besides their work on Sister Cities Council. And it is a fabulous program that I and the mayor were able to enjoy our trip to Cameo last fall, and it was exciting because there were other cities there. One city from Austria, a city from Brazil, and Suzhou, China. So we really got to experience the international flair, and it's everything that this proclamation says. So I will present this to you. Gina will sign this at another point.
Yes.
I'll present this to you, and because Mayor Noble is absent, she'll sign it, but we'll take a picture. Okay. No chocolate? Okay, that was all the important business. Now we're just down to the consent docket. Councillors, is there anything on the consent docket that you would like to pull?
Motion to approve the consent docket is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes 3 to 0. We are all the way down to ordinances. We have three ordinances, one on first reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3346, an ordinance closing a portion of East 5th Street right-of-way adjacent to 423 South Perkins Road and 798 East 5th Avenue. This is just that little portion of roadway that was left over from the first closing that we did on 5th Street, and you approved this at your meeting, I believe, in June.
Any questions?
Motion to approve to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that is approved, 3 to 0. Takes us to second reading, number A. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3344, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 5,200 West 6th Avenue from CG Commercial, General District to P Public District. This is one of the parcels for the new pump station.
Motion to adopt, approve, motion to do something?
Second.
It is a very steep learning curve on adopt or approve.
For all.
That is approved, 3 to 0.
Does depend on which day you ask that question.
Which one is the right one here?
I believe it's adopt in the second reading.
Adopt, okay. Number B, second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3345, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 6,200 West 19th Avenue from RSL Large Lot, Single Family Residential District to P Public District. This is the other item from the Southwest Water Project. She approved.
Thank you. Councillors?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Please vote. And that passes also 3 to 0. Moving right along, we're down to reports already. Right? Okay. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Couldn't you just stretch it out a little bit?
I'm going to go for a record here.
Okay. Mr. McNichol?
I do have an item. We have two vacancies on the Planning Commission, and you can find applications for those vacancies on Stillwater's website. And you can fill that application out and send it to Patty Osmus, or drop them off at the city manager's office. And we really would like to encourage citizen involvement in the Planning Commission. Very important job.
Really important job, and it's quite exciting. And if you'd like to know what's going on in Stillwater, it's a great place to find out.
Exactly.
Councillors, do you have any announcements?
I do. I have two. Stillwater Fire Department will host a car seat checkup event Tuesday, July 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Stillwater Fire Department Headquarters. For those of you, I know it's challenging to get that car seat in there, so this is a great service they provide to our citizens. There are nationally certified technicians that will be demonstrating how to correctly install a car seat or booster seat and check those which have already been installed. A limited number of car seats will also be available for $10 to those who receive government assistance. So a great, great program. All right. For those of us who are tired of the humidity and the heat for winter, this Friday, downtown Stillwater is being transformed into a winter wonderland for a special edition of Friday Food Trucks and Tunes from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. this Friday, July 15. The event will be moved to the Green Space at 8th and Husband. All your favorite food trucks and live entertainment will still be part of the event along with special winter features. We plan to continue themed Friday Food Trucks and Tunes in the Green Space, so keep an eye out on our website for upcoming events. But if we're looking forward to cooler activities, come out this Friday. They're great, great events.
Very fun. Councillor Joyce?
Yes, I guess I'm going to announce the rescheduling date for our fireworks show that was unfortunately postponed over the holiday weekend. It will be rescheduled for Friday, September 2, which is the Friday of Labor Day weekend. So rather than do it Monday of Labor Day weekend, we're going to do it Friday night, which is the night of the first Pioneer football game, and the night before, the first OSU home football game. So they'll be at halftime of the Pioneer football game that night on Friday. The parking lots, the whole Boomer blast will happen that same evening, so the parking lots will open at 6:30. Fireworks will be around 9:30 at halftime of the football game. The postponements from the original date were due to the heavy rain we had the couple days before that. I guess we parked about 2,000 cars on the grass down there, and so about 1,500 of those would have ended up stuck if we would have done it on the 4th, so we decided not to. So looking forward to a great time on Labor Day weekend on Friday the 2nd.
Thank you. I also have an announcement. We're scheduled to begin the last road reconstruction project for the 2015-2016 pavement management program, which is McElroy Road from Jardot to City Limits. Matthews Avenue from Hope Street to Main Street, and Hope Street from Miller Avenue to Matthews Avenue underwent complete reconstruction and is now complete. I drove on it today. It was lovely. Both roadways were previously asphalt and are now concrete. We were also able to add sidewalk and additional parking. Always like to hear about progress and how well our tax dollars are being used, something really visible. Any questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. This meeting is now adjourned, 3 to 0. And now we will move on to... Does it make a difference?
Stillwater, you tell these stories.
I will now call the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for July 11 to order. Consent docket? Councillors?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And that passes 3 to 0. We have not much else on that agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. The Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for July 11 is adjourned. And now I will call to order the July 11 Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting. Getting weaker. Consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And that passes 3 to 0. No items for public comment. No items removed from consent docket. General orders. Mr. McNichol?
Angela McLaughlin will be presenting a report on possible business development agreement.
Good evening. Angela McLaughlin, Economic Development Director for the City of Stillwater. I believe you all have a copy of the report that was presented. You also should have a copy, a draft copy, of the business development incentive agreement, and also the rebate application that Everyman submitted to the City of Stillwater. It's pretty straightforward. The only thing that wasn't included in my report is I did go back and look at our retail strategies report, and we have about $1.6 million in leakage in menswear. So there's definitely a need. After speaking to the bid board, they're excited to have this addition downtown. Of course, we lost Bates Brothers many, many years ago, and while this won't be a Bates Brothers, it will definitely fill a niche downtown. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have or offer any other recommendations I can.
Thank you, Angela. Councillors?
So can you explain to me the idea behind the incentive here? What are we incentivizing?
Well, this program began in 2008, and when it was originally created, it was to be used as a tool to attract business downtown and just help with those small businesses to get on their feet. And originally, we had a loan that was available that we no longer do, which I think is a very good thing. But this money can be used from anything, to operating costs, to paying utilities, employees. We don't put any parameters on how they're going to use that money, but oftentimes, when they get this type of incentive, then they'll take it back to their bank, and it makes them a little bit more loan-ready, I guess. However, in Everyman's case, they are not taking out any loans. They're going into this completely debt-free.
So I guess I'm...to me, it doesn't sound like an incentive, where we're trying to get somebody to make a decision that we want them to make.
Right.
Right? I mean, this decision's been made. This is a reward more for locating downtown.
Well, it depends on how you look at it. It is definitely, over the years, we've used to help attract businesses downtown, which was part of the need. When you looked in that area, and even to this day, when we have empty storefronts, it is to try to attract people to open their business downtown, as opposed to going to Lake Viewpoint or even to the Strip. The area was created because, at that time, the city felt that something had to change to get businesses to locate on Main Street.
And I'll kind of interrupt there, too, because I think Zenati's Wine Bar was one of the first...
You were the first, yeah.
...to use it. And incentive is probably to open our doors, you're right. We would have opened our doors maybe, but it was incentive to maybe do some things with our business to help us open up that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise because we didn't have those funds available.
Right. And a condition of some of these buildings, was the Avon building that they're going into, needs some extensive remodeling. They all, they have also, or they're going to be, I don't think we had it on the agenda last month, applying for an exterior grant. So the facade will be redone with new signage. They're taking advantage of the other programs available to them, and also the media grant program to help with their grand opening. Those are through the bid directly and not necessarily a city program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Angela, how long is this incentive?
It's five years. Originally, when this program was started, and it began right before I was hired in 2008, it could go anywhere from five to 10 years, but really, five years was the cap. And for what I do, especially with a loan, not a loan or rebate like this, I really do think we should cap them at five years. It's $6,000, and the way the incentive works is just like any other sales tax rebate. At the end of that five years, if they haven't met that amount that we're agreeing upon, the incentive ends right then. It doesn't matter if they haven't received it or not. Or let's say they do a great business. They double, triple their revenues. If they get to that in three years, then the incentive also ends. Louis is a great example of that. We had a five-year agreement with them, but I believe that was completely paid back within three. Of course, they're going to do a lot more business than Everyman, but it's just an example you can look at.
You know, we've heard a lot about incentives in this budget statement process. Can a person sell an incentive to another business?
No. No. The incentive is with the business directly, so if this business was to go out of business or to change hands, no, it is with Everyman, Bryce and his wife, the partners of their company, so it would end at that point.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors?
You're pondering.
Well, I'm not a fan of these incentive agreements that we enter into from time to time, and not a fan of...I'm a fan of this business. I would love to see a menswear store in Stillwater. I've been looking for shoes, and it's really hard to find, men's dress shoes in this town. To me, it's just a matter of the fact that sales tax is our only revenue. It is the revenue we get to run the city. And we ask businesses and individuals, when they shop those businesses, to collect sales tax and to pay it to the city so that we can operate services. And when we decide to give some of that money back, we're taking that money out of the city's pocket. And to me, the idea of incentivizing someone to make a decision makes some sense. If we, you know, early on with Zenati's, we wanted the revitalization of downtown. That made sense when you were the first one in. It makes a little less sense to me now that downtown is doing well, and businesses like this have made the decision already to go downtown because they feel like they can make a successful business happen downtown. And then for us to turn around and say we're going to incentivize it is really not an incentive. It's saying, well, we're going to reward you for this and give you some money back. It's a struggle for me because I don't know if it's the best use of this $6,000 from the city's budget. So I don't know. I go back and forth with it, and I understand, you know, I know that we all have different opinions on...
Well, and I think, too, it's not for every business. I don't think every business needs to have an incentive or be a part of this. I think it's this one, obviously, we have a $1.6 million leakage for men's clothing, so obviously, there's a need for it. So I think it's going to be a successful venture for this business, and I think it's exciting that they do want to locate there. And like I said, I look at it as incentive in a different way, and not necessarily a reward, but just, you know, maybe something, a little extra push to help them get their doors open and do something they wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, because I know that was huge for us.
I just wanted to clarify, too. There has been a slight change in this program. When it was originally set up, Mr. Galloway at that time, they did not have to have a location. That has changed, I believe. When 1907 Meat Markets applied, one of the councillors really wanted to know they had a location and they had signed a lease. So we've now emphasized to them that when they come to us, they need to have a location, something in hand that we know that they're serious about, which was something that was asked by one of the city councillors. If that needs to be modified or changed, we can discuss that early on, but that's something that we've been emphasizing to them now. Anyone that comes into my office, in fact, we have someone else that I've been talking to, we need to know, are they going to locate downtown? They give us a physical address to show that they're serious about it. So it has changed slightly.
And this is kind of to your point, isn't it?
Sure.
Councillor Joyce?
Yeah. I mean, we're almost working against each other. It's chicken and egg. Do you ask them to have a lease signed, and then we know they're serious, and we can put that in documentation? Or do we say, you know, this is early on in the process, that it's truly an incentive to get you to sign that lease? So it's kind of changed a little bit.
This is not completely germane, but it does lead to, or go back to our study session, strategic planning meeting a couple of weeks ago, asking for a really comprehensive economic development plan that would include consistent, rational...
Yeah, I mean, what I'd really like to see on deals like this one is if the city's investing $6,000 in this business, which is what we're doing.
Right.
The city's making an investment in this business of $6,000. I would like for us to try to figure, I know this is difficult, but I would like for us to try to figure out some way to calculate our return. How much additional sales tax revenue is the city going to receive? Because, I mean, the point behind this is to say that if we put this $6,000 in, we're going to end up getting more than $6,000 out because this business is going to bring more real sales tax revenue, increase the whole pie.
Absolutely.
I don't know how we calculate that and prove that that's the case, but I would like to be able to go to citizens and say, we invested $6,000 of your money, and we made however much off of it.
It is difficult to judge because with something like this, did they buy that pair of slacks from Everyman, or did they go, you know, just move from J.C. Penney's to over here? It is hard to know that. What we have done with the bid, in particular with these type of incentives, over the years, being able to tell, like, for instance, how much the restaurant sales have went up and increased, and looked to those revenues to say, we know for sure that they've increased in this area. We also hope by adding the businesses to downtown that it's going to get, hopefully, some spillage over to the other businesses and just to increase the amount of people. We have been using this program as a way to attract businesses, and I know soon we'll be going into, hopefully, bid number two and have another 10 years. And if the council, if we do an economic development policy and they want to change this program, it is something for sure that we would want to address early on, because we've used it in our toolbox to really help get that momentum downtown and really grow it to what it has become today, I think.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I just want to clarify. The discussion here has moved a little bit to, it may be confusing. We're not handing them $6,000 up front.
No. It's a rebate.
It is paid in arrears, and it's only paid after they collect sales tax.
Absolutely.
That's not an effort to sway the council. It's just to clarify the procedure.
I get that it comes after, but it's still $6,000 that we collected that we could put in the general fund budget.
That's correct.
But we take it back out and we give it back to the business.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it comes after. I mean, we're not, I understand we're not fronting them money, but it's still an investment that the city's making in the business. I appreciate your explanations.
Oh, no problem.
You know, I'm trying to fill time here. I know you're...
Well, we're trying to make it to, what time would that be? 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Yes.
Keep talking.
So if you have any questions for me, I am here to help answer those.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Angela. As much as I can extend. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councillors?
Move forward on this?
Yes, let's move forward on this. Would you like to move forward, councillors?
I don't know what you mean.
Would you like to approve this or disapprove it, call a motion, second a motion, table it, postpone it? What other options do we have? Okay.
I move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt or approve?
Approve.
Am I the only one that can second this, or is she? I'll go ahead and second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that is approved, 3 to 0. Okay. Takes us to reports. General Counsel? General Counsel.
Anything to report?
Are you sure? Okay.
We hit six.
We hit, yeah, we did.
We got it.
Okay, okay. Mr. McNichol? We don't have much time.
We are in the process of working on a economic development plan, or a strategic plan, for the council, and hopefully, within a month or so, we'll have a draft that you can look over and pick apart, give back to us, and we'll go back to the drawing board, and maybe it'll be just fabulous the way it is.
Thank you very much, appreciate hearing that. Trustees?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Nothing, nothing, nothing. Well, we did miss Mayor Noble and Councillor Nahara tonight, and we look forward to having them back at our next meeting. Questions? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. That passed, three to zero.